Do the video.
Hey, welcome to the April twenty-six, twenty twenty-five public hearing on the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan update, twenty forty-five. And the Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is welcome during the public communications section of each meeting and during any scheduled public hearings such as today. We'll start with introductions to my left and Commissioner Martin.
I am Colin Bartlett. I live in Tumwater, but I am the at-large for District Five.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Eric Casino, I serve at large and live in the Lacey UGA.
And Pestinger, District Five.
Daniel Bomberger, I live in and serve District One.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
And I'm Joel Hanson. I serve District Three. We have an agenda for us. I would pick most to approve.
So moved.
Second.
On the paper. Hi. Okay, we have an agenda. Thank you. First thing on our agenda is public communications. This is not the public hearing portion of today's meeting, but if anyone had public comments they wanted to give to the Planning Commission, not on the Comprehensive Plan, but on some other topic, this would be your opportunity. Does anybody have some other comments that wish to provide? If anyone online wishes to provide public communication outside of the public hearing, not on the Comprehensive Plan, please indicate so by raising your hand. And do we have anyone watching that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no one, then we will move to the next portion of our agenda, which is public hearing, the continued public hearing on Thurston twenty forty-five. And I have another script for this portion of the meeting that I have to read. Today, we are here to hold a public hearing on Thurston twenty forty-five, the county's Comprehensive Plan periodic update. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify here in person or on Zoom. Written comments will also be accepted through Sunday, April twenty-seventh at eleven fifty-nine PM. Wish to testify today. For those here in person, please sign in at the back of the room. For those on Zoom, please indicate your interest in testifying by choosing the raise your hand option. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. And then the chair, me, will call your name and you will be, and then you can unmute yourself when it's your turn to speak. I will read the name of the next person on the list, and I will also just read the names of the two people after that so that they can start to get ready for their public comment. I think we'll do things the same way we did on Wednesday. We'll give everyone five minutes instead of three because I don't, I don't think that'll be a problem. And I will begin here in the room, calling out the names on the list that want to testify, and then we'll go to Zoom. And this public hearing is scheduled until two PM today. I think when we run out of people wishing to testify, we'll we'll go into recess, but we will come back into the open public hearing if anyone shows up either on Zoom or in person that wishes to testify before two o'clock today. We will start with a staff presentation, and then we will get to public comments. And I guess this public hearing is now officially open.
Thank you, Chair. Maya Tople, Senior Planner with Thurston County Community Planning, joined tonight with Anna Rodriguez, Associate Planner, and here in spirit is Amelia Schwartz. Short presentation, this is for the formal record and for our guests here tonight, but it's the same that the Planning Commission saw on Wednesday night. So our public here, hearing today is on Thurston twenty forty-five, which is the Comprehensive Plan periodic update. And Thurston twenty forty-five is the county's periodic update to our Comprehensive Plan. It's the update that occurs on a ten-year cycle as required by the Growth Management Act, which is RCW thirty-six seventy A. And it plans for the next twenty years. So we do a broad sweeping update across the whole plan. We update our population projections, our narratives, our goals, policies, and the visions for the next twenty years through twenty forty-five. It also brings our Comprehensive Plan into alignment with recent changes in state law, and it balances fourteen planning goals under the Growth Management Act. So the scope of this update, it is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to discuss the entire plan. We are not doing major updates to two chapters, the Economic Development Chapter and the Health Chapter at this time, but if there are changes that need to be made that relate to things like climate or housing within those chapters, we are free to do that as it's brought up by public comment or in our next several work sessions. The biggest changes in this update are to reflect new state law requirements on housing and climate. So in the public hearing draft that is available for the public online, there are some changes that are not reflected yet that we are still working on, and they will be in the next version that comes out. So we are going to be reordering the chapters, which is shown on the screen there, and there will be some additional integration of Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan strategies, both in the policies within the plan and in the Implementation Plan appendix. So that work is ongoing and will be reflected in the next draft. To date, we've had more than thirty community engagement efforts, and most of that has been by attending events held by other community organizations, as well as some presentations to external community groups. The Planning Commission has thirty-two work sessions so far, not including the public hearing on Wednesday or the public hearing today. And we did hold an online open house for the changes that affect Grand Mound. We also did a mailing notice to all of the residents within the urban growth area and within the thousand-foot distance from that urban growth area, so they were notified. And additionally, there's some online story maps for all the chapters that go over the major changes. So for today's hearing, the same as our hearing on Wednesday, we notified this hearing by a legal notice in the Squali Valley News. We sent web mails on April third and April seventeenth, issued a press release as required, and also did a Facebook post, and we boosted that closer to the seventeenth, which is a promoted advertisement method. So now going through the chapters, we'll go through this a little bit quicker than we did last time. Chapter one has just had a broad update to bring the data narrative up to speed. Chapter two is our land use chapter right now. We've got some new information and policies on water availability. There have been some updates on military compatibility to incorporate the new South Town Community Military Partnership Planning efforts. And then we've done some updates to the land use designations within that chapter to neighborhood convenience commercial and also to rural resource industrial. Chapter three is our Natural Resources chapter. This chapter has had some organizational changes, and it's also had changes to the goals and policies to reflect new conservation measures and new tools in our conservation subdivisions. Also, a couple policies on considering a new agricultural zone in the future. Things like agricultural water rights are included in this chapter now and also forest conservation methods. Aquaculture section has been slightly revised, but we're continuing to receive comments on that section as well. Chapter four, it's a full repeal and replace because of all the new requirements in state law. So we've updated a lot in that chapter. As you've seen, we have the housing projections broken down by income level. That was the land capacity analysis that show available lands and things pertaining to affordable housing. This chapter includes an assessment of racially disparate impacts as well as some new goals and policies, and specifically to call out that five percent rural growth policy as well. Chapter five, transportation. It has a new active transportation component. It's updated to include some multimodal level of service, things, forecast demands, and transportation system improvements, as well as updates for vehicle miles traveled and things related to the climate chapter. And capital facilities, some updated county plans, some updated levels of service and financial data, as well as the goals and policies. And utilities, updated references to necessary county plans. We've added a section on internet utilities after the Planning Commission's direction last month, as well as some additional narrative on development phasing in Grand Mound for water and sewer utility. And then Environment Recreation Open Space, Amelia was working and leading this chapter. There's a new section on rural forest canopy and open space and green space corridors, as well as new policies on forest resources, wildlife, open and green spaces as well. And then Chapter ten, Cultural Resources. This was formerly called the Historic Resources Chapter, and we did rename it to Cultural Resources. It has some updated narrative, as with all of the chapters, some tie-ins for land use permitting and climate, as well as revising all of the policies to be an active voice. So Chapter twelve is our new chapter on climate, and this covers climate mitigation and resiliency. There's data in there and a narrative that reflects both of those components, as well as policies that cover all of the sectors in Thurston County, building and energy transportation utilities. So some policies are in there, and then other policies occur in the other chapters. Our appendices, just going over the major changes that we've made to those. Appendix A used to be our Thurston County history, and that has been fully repealed and will be replaced with a technical appendix that has more details on housing, transportation, and also our natural resource lands. Appendix B is a brand-new implementation plan for Thurston County, and that has actions and metrics for the county to track our progress on implementing our policies. Appendix C has been updated to link out to documents that are online when available, and then the maps are updated across the plan to reflect any new data. Going through our development regulation changes, we have a very bulky code packet with several changes, but the major buckets are updates to our definitions, updates for military compatibility, climate-related updates, and then housing-related updates. And just going through some of the details of that. For military compatibility, we have a new military influence area overlay for the rural area, and that addresses things like permit and plat notice for noise considerations, real estate disclosures, and a baseline regulation on light emissions specifically for larger commercial and multifamily properties. Climate updates, we have new code language for EV infrastructure that streamlines that permit process, solar energy systems, and then alternative energy storage systems like batteries to store that renewable energy. And our housing-related updates is by far the largest update to the code regulations. We have a couple of code changes that affect the Grand Mound area, including two options for bumping residential densities down there to accommodate our deficit that we have in Grand Mound in the low-income housing bracket. We're also considering allowing two ADUs within the Grand Mound UGA. And then there are changes that affect full rural life permitting, manufactured homes within lammers, streamlining the mobile home permitting process, and making that a quicker and cheaper process for our community, allowing permanent supportive housing and transitional housing across our zones in the rural Thurston County as long as it meets the density requirements and other regulations, and then density bonuses for conservation subdivisions, as well as rural accessory dwelling units and removing the family member unit allowance. So an updated summary of our public comment. We've received over six hundred comments for the life of the project, but as of yesterday morning, we had received fifty-one written comments. I can tell you, we've received several more since that packet was sent to you all. We'll forward to you probably later next week, the full packet with everything we've received up until the close tomorrow. The major themes kind of aligned with what I described on Wednesday night, but we've had some new comments that speak to mineral lands, water availability, aquaculture, and then more comments that refer to the TCMP and other things of that nature as well as our. So for our community members online and in the room, you can engage. If you would like to submit a written comment, those are being exited up until Sunday evening tomorrow, eleven fifteen PM, and you can go to Thurston twenty forty-five dot org to submit that written comment. You can also sign up for email updates and access our survey my e-link. So that concludes our presentation, and now we'll start with the public comment.
Like I said before, we'll start here in the room. As soon as I see the signup sheet, everyone will be given five minutes on the timer to comment. And you may not see your unused time to another person under our rules. And when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. The first person signed up to speak today is Mike McCormick, and after that will be Marcy Cleaver and Claire McGivern. Apologies in advance if I butcher a name. It's obviously not intentional.
You did fine with mine.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Mike McCormish. I'm a longtime Thurston County resident. I actually live in the city of Olympia, South Capital Neighborhood. First, I want to commend you and the county for this effort. I am a retired planner. I've worked in this arena in the past. I know what is required. I'm aware of how many changes the legislature has bestowed upon you and us in the last several years. So it is a huge task. It's hard work. Not many people understand how complicated it is and how much time it takes, and I want to thank you for that. I do want to support the action alternative and the changes that are embedded in this. I think it's essential that you have to do something. You've taken some good steps, and I encourage you to move forward with that. I am particularly concerned about how much new growth will be stimulated outside the urban growth areas. Not speaking about the lammers at this point. I know they're a very peculiar item, and that needs some attention. There's been way too much growth outside the urban area of Thurston County since the Growth Management Act came into place. I think it places huge burdens on the county. It's expensive. It doesn't help us try to meet our climate goals. Air quality, water, waters. People are surprised that water is an issue in the west side of Washington State, but it really is. It is a precious resource, and it's in its archaic statutes that make it difficult to effectively manage. So please pay particular attention to conserving water, and one of the ways to do that is to limit the amount of residential growth outside of the existing urban growth area. You have some huge challenges with regard to affordable housing, housing targets, and where the new housing is needed, needs to go. Please do everything that you can to direct that future growth within the existing unincorporated urban growth areas and within the Grand Mound urban growth, unincorporated urban growth area. That's where it needs to be. The other thing that I would encourage you to do is look at your one-to-five zoning. You have a large disproportionate allocation, one to five, compared to other counties in Western Washington, particularly outside of Central Puget Sound. I would much prefer to see those be larger parcels, and I would particularly encourage you look to redesignate some of that to agricultural resource where it's appropriate. You're probably aware of the statistics on the amount of agricultural land you've lost in the last twenty years. That's something that I think is pretty precious, and I use that in a, not in pejorative sense. People in Thurston County do recognize and appreciate the small farmers and how hard it is and how difficult it is to transition from one generation to the other. But I would, I would encourage you to do everything that you can to protect and enhance and expand, if you can, the land that's available for agricultural and, and forest timber use too, but I'm particularly concerned about the agricultural aspect of it. The sustainable Thurston target of five percent growth in, outside of incorporated areas, I think is a very important target. If I read the statistics right, we had fourteen percent of the county's growth there in the last year or both. We have to do better than that. So I know it's challenging. I know it's controversial. I know it's political. I know your neighbors don't like it, but it's the right thing to do for the interest of all of us, our children in the future, and if we're going to have a chance with climate challenges that we have. I encourage you to think progressively, think about the future, and make some good decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. I'm right on time. Next up is Marcy Cleaver, followed by Claire McGivern and James McGivern.
Oh, Marcy Cleaver. I'm a resident of Thurston County, and you've got my address on the.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you for saying all that because that's a great lead-in to what I want to say. It could have been better arranged. I had no idea what he was going to say. So my first comments are directed to the agricultural section, specifically the goal of preserving ag land to ensure adequate land for long-term farm use. There's many parcels of land that are farmed in the county that are outside of the LTA long-term ag zoning. Given the complexity of expanding the LTA zoning, I'd like the county to consider allowing landowners to opt in to the LTA zoning. There are landowners who do not want their land developed in the future. Viable county policies could be created to allow landowners to choose to opt in to this zoning. Then willing land, these landowners could use the pack field to conserve ag land for the future. I know the devil's in the details for such a policy, but I think it should be examined as the hanging fruit for the preservation of Thurston County ag lands. The second point I'd like to make has to do with water. As you know, the vast majority of drinking water in Thurston County comes from wells, and that it's viable, it's necessary, water's necessary to have agriculture in Thurston County. Therefore, it's important to make sure that aquifer recharge is not only maintained but enhanced as our population grows. So I want to share with you some thoughts from a recent article in the March twenty-eighth issue of Science Magazine. It's a long title, abrupt sea level rise and earth's gradual pole shift reveal permanent hydrological regime changes in the twenty-first century. So what are they talking about? The author has used multiple data sources and models to estimate that the global loss of soil moisture has added to sea level. All this water that's coming down is rain. Is this going back out to the sea? It's causing the sea to go up. The papers authors point to the global increased air temperatures, increasing water vapor pressure deficit, and less well-distributed precipitation as factors that make large-scale recovery of soil moisture unlikely. So given that you know that water is not soaking into the soil but running off into the oceans, this is going to have implications for our aquifers in Thurston County. Alan Sabry, who, if you're an agricultural person, probably know him, he's a world-renowned pastoralist, and others have long noted that significant causes of this drastic loss of soil moisture has to do with conditions at the soil surface and its ability to accept and retain water. Factors that play into this include impervious surfaces, rooftops, roads, pavement, deforestation, including the removal of urban trees, destruction of wetlands, erosion, unmanaged grazing, bare and dry and compacted soils. In other words, with the bare soils, they're faked in our summer sun, which we get very little rain, and then they become hydrophobic. They shed water. So the little water that we do get, where does that go? It goes someplace else because it's not going to get soaked in and ickyphobic as well. So as you put together the comp plan for the future, planning for the growing number of people that are moving into Thurston County, ask yourself how the policies that you are affecting, you have control early on, good crap, are affecting the soil surface. That's, that's the key to recharge our aquifers. As a policy, please decrease the amount and the ability of, are the policies that you're making, decrease the amount and the ability of the soil to absorb water. Are they covering up the soil only to shed water to places where it's not absorbed? And we choose to build housing up and not out to reduce impervious surfaces. And retention ponds have policies that allow to be okay, have your plants growing in your retention pond instead of requiring owners to clear out all those ponds. And those roots from those plants are like channels for the water to go down. And I know on some of the farms that I'm involved with, we have to keep those plants out of there. So we want to enhance water absorption at the soil surface versus if they are hardened surface. So what ideas are in the plan that you can support to improve the soil moisture in Thurston County along, along with the offer recharge? Increase the amount of clean water percolating down to Thurston County soils. Because this is really true planning for the future, because without water, there's no life. There's no ad. There's no food. We need water. And so that's, that's important to look at that soil moisture. Thank you.
Thank you. Next sign of speak is Claire McGivern, followed by, oh, James said he doesn't want to, Sharon Kegy and Betsy Norton.
Hi, I'm Claire McGivern, and I will be drafting a letter tonight, a more intelligent response regarding the designated lands for mining. I just found out about it from a concerned neighbor who sent me a letter, which is why I'm here this morning, because it's the neighbor who sent me the letter. And it's regarding a designated, a proposed designated area on Lake St. Clair for mining. And apparently just found out here that it was already designated in two thousand sixteen and that there's no changes to it. So I'm a little concerned because I literally looked directly at this property that is surrounded on both sides by Lake St. Clair, which is a geologically sensitive area and the McAllister Springs watershed. It's also a private property which has no public access. It's a one-lane road to it. And if this were ever developed, it would have a huge impact on the entire lake. So I just felt a need to say, hey, wait a minute. So even though there's a few people and it's owned one in five properties to be developed, it is on private property, and I just needed to come and at least make a statement. You're here. It may be a rural area. We count, and it is something that is an extraordinary impact if that were ever enacted. So I'm going to stop there, and you'll hear a more intelligent cohesive response when I can have some more time to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of those signed up to speak, I next have Sharon Kegy and Betsy Norton. Erin, did you wish?
Actually, I do. About speaking in front of people, so I didn't say yes on the sheet. But I'm a resident of Thurston County. I'm a landowner. I own a portion of the land that she mentioned. It's, it's sandwiched between two bodies of the, of the like, Lake St. Clair. Has residential, rural residential neighborhoods on three sides of it, and these are more than one unit per five acres. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's our favorite piece of property. And when I looked at the map that was sent to us and saw that it entailed that entire section of, of what we love and what we pay taxes on. And I was shocked because I feel like it's grossly inappropriate to put it down as a proposed mineral resource land. It doesn't make any sense to me because of the location of where it is with the water on both sides and neighborhoods. So I'm here because I need to voice my opposition, and I, I want to know how do you hit the thoughtful list, or what are the steps? That's, that's what I want to know what to do next. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up to speak is Betsy Norton. And following that would be Charlotte Persons and Todd Anderson.
Hi, I'm Betsy Norton. I live in Olympia. I'm here representing Black Hills Audubon Society Conservation Committee, along with Charlotte. I'm not sure if anybody's online. Black Hills Audubon Society, soon to be named the South Sound Bird Alliance, has been reviewing and researching and submitting recommendations and questions to the Thurston County Planning Commission. For many months now. We very much appreciate you listening to us and all the work that you put into all this. This comp plan. This effort reflects our organization's love for wildlife and thus our interest in conserving wildlife species and habitat in the county. As the State of Birds twenty twenty five report reconfirms and other research on freshwater species, marine mammals and other wildlife. Biodiversity is under siege. The primary cause is habitat loss from human development and climate change. You'll see in these chapter comments that we will submit a repeated, repeated refrain for the county to act. To achieve the climate mitigation commitments and timeline in the Thurston County mitigation plan. This is because the need to address climate is urgent and because the current draft of the plan doesn't reflect this urgency. We strongly encourage the county to make climate commitments a priority by adopting the actions and timeline from the Thurston County. Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and the Thurston Climate Adaptation Plan into all the appropriate chapters of this twenty forty five comp plan. We expect that the large array of species currently resident in the county and the additional long list of species which migrate through the county. Will change in content over the next twenty years in response to climate change and loss and degradation of habitat. For that reason, we're glad to see that wildlife corridors did make it into the draft plan. As these explicitly conserved areas provide high quality, diverse habitat for many species and their physical connection through land or water. Provide a path for species movement. We encourage the county to continue and expand its efforts to protect legacy forests. Promote public ownership of wildlife habitat and provide private landowners with voluntary incentives. Place their land in conservation easements which conserve habitat for wildlife while protecting open space and ecosystem services for all of us. Other changes we recommend include emphasizing protecting water quantity and quality as other people have attested to. For groundwater and surface waters. Maximize conservation of connected wildlife habitat for diversity of ecosystems. Commit to meeting the goals and timeline. In the Thurston County mitigation plan and adapt the actions in the Thurston County adaptation plan. Insert forests and prairies for their habitat and value them for their ecosystem services. Carbon sequestration, water and air quality. Filtration, stormwater management and heat reduction. Update development code standards and manuals so they're sized to be effective under the extreme weather expected from climate change using the best available science. Rethink aquaculture without the plastic and with better protections for native species. Take strong measures to protect and restore freshwater and marine ecosystems. Ensure land use is environmentally equitable. Ensure natural resource extraction is fully remediated before allowing redevelopment. Assess economic development opportunities in terms of their consumption of scarce resources, especially freshwater and their demand for power due to its carbon footprint. For climate change mitigation and adaptation, as for conservation habitat, we reiterate. It's important to track, set and track actions against measurable goals based on a firm timeline. Which is laid out already in the Thurston Climate Action Plan. It's only by taking effective action in the near term that we can save the natural environment and our treasured wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Charlotte Persons, followed by Todd Anderson and Zuri Pratt.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Persons. I live at nine hundred three Glass Avenue East in Olympia, Washington. And I'm also representing Black Hills also Audubon Society. And I thought I would focus on some of the things we have not already turned in on another comments. First would be in the housing chapter, there is no mention of climate change. And I understand that climate change is supposed to be addressed in all the chapters. I hope that you will add something about the, how the common climate change effects like drought, heat domes, wildfires and floods. Or create the need for new construction materials and methods and increased household emergency preparedness, including changes to housing structures. I also would like to talk about. An issue which is Grand Mound. Black Hills Audubon Society believes in environmental justice. And there are some problems with Grand Mound just as it is, mostly because all of it is so close to I five. And I five divides the community. That's low income housing is added. I suggest we need to double on all three rural transit routes. Times of how often the buses come so that people can actually use that service for commuting to jobs. And that so they'll have access to libraries, pharmacies and large grocery stores in Centralia, Rochester and to Minna. Also, along the same lines, the county should work to attract a national brand grocery store with a pharmacy to Grand Mound. And they should, the county should work to create at least one park with a playground. And maybe two, one on each side of the freeway. Another issue I'd like to talk about is in the technical appendants, there's the suggestion that the county. Change the code in order to encourage accessory dwelling units. By reducing some in fact pack fees to zero. That seems too far. Since the inhabitants will still use roads and parks, please perhaps reduce the squeeze by half. Instead of to zero, half is what our cities is reduced the impact fees. And then the county is also supposed to allow detached accessory dwelling units in all parts of the county. Now, in the cities and UGA's, the lot sizes keep the ADUs close to the main residence. But in rural counting zoning, detached ADUs could be built quite far from the main residence. This will not have the effect of densifying housing, but instead will spread it out and chop up open space. And we'll use more resources for driveways, well, and septic connections and so on. Please add a requirement that the detached ADUs must be a maximum of thirty feet from the main residence. The same section states that the ADU should be permitted to be one thousand square feet. This is not an accessory dwelling unit. This is actually a small house. It is bigger than my house. Please keep the size to eight hundred square feet as in the cities and UGA's and most of the state. And in terms of the climate chapter, you've already heard a lot about how we liked you to adopt by. Proposed to adopt the whole Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan into this chapter, just adopted, appended. And then figure out later what you've left out and stated funny and all that, just get it in there. Finally. I think that's about all I have to say, except that. You might consider adding to the transportation chapter, which has quite a lot on the complete streets program. Which adds, asks that our streets in the UGA's, I assume, will be. Not just for cars, but also for pedestrians and bicycles. You could add to that the goal to create walkable neighborhoods. Which is a program to have people close to as many of their daily needs. And that lowers car use and greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
You very much. Next, signed up to speak is, well, actually not signed up to speak, but next on the list is Todd Anderson, if you wish to speak.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Todd.
Hello, my name is Todd Anderson and my family has property on Lake St. Clair. That's been designated or supposed to be designated for mineral resource lands. This is actually Sharon Kegy was up here to talk earlier. It's that piece. I was surprised to hear about this. No one had from the plenty has contacted my family about this. We heard from a Facebook post on Lake St. Clair. But has me concerned. I am against this designation of our property. It's private property. And it's been designated agricultural land for over a hundred years. And one of your goals, number eight, your goal eight, objective eight. Is not to extract minerals from agricultural land. It should be avoided. This has always been agricultural land. And so I am against this designation and access would be very difficult. It's a private road. And again, I'm surprised to see this. If you are going to designate private land, you should probably contact the owners, have communication. So my family is very against this and. It's, we've been tree farmers for over a hundred years and it shouldn't be, minerals should not be taken from this land and it should be off. This for designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. The last person I have on my list here is Zuri Pratt.
Hello, everybody. My name is Zuri Pratt. I live at twenty nine thirty Anna Street Northeast, Olympia Wall. I go to North Hurson High School. I'm a senior there this year. And we spent a lot of time in my natural resources, science classes here focusing on what you guys do as community planners and what we as the youth can contribute to that. And I understand that the human health like aspect of it is not under review right now, but. I still wanted to come and just like bring awareness to this because I do think it's really important. So in my school, there has been a large increase in students vaping and smoking marijuana. It's not a rare occurrence to walk into my, into the bathrooms and see a room full of girls all circled up vaping together. And it's also not a rare occurrence to walk into the bathroom and be met with the pungent smell of marijuana. So everyone knows the effects that smoking has on human health. It has been very well researched and studied. And that is why there are laws in place to regulate who is able to use or purchase these items. Adults are capable of making their own decisions for their health and bodies. However, high school students don't have the same capability. They are very easily influenced and impressionable and they are most likely to do what their friends are doing. So when they see someone vaping, they want to try it and then they can get addicted. So they also start that habit. They don't understand the debilitating and long lasting effects that vaping has on their growing bodies. The side effects of vaping are more detrimental to teenagers than adults because of their developing brains. It can also lead to poor brain development, asthma and an increased risk of future nicotine addiction and substance abuse. Chapter eleven, goal seven, objective A, policy three covers, quote, the county should collaborate with other local jurisdictions. Cities and towns to enforce and strengthen the smoking in public places law and quote. I understand that banning products is not an effective way to get people to stop using these products. I know that from the prohibition period nineteen twenty. And I don't think that we should repeat the past. So instead, my request is that we, Thurston County, put a sin taxation on the purchase of these substances. Because I believe that if there is a larger tax on vapes, I'm focusing on vapes, that people would be less likely to buy it. And then the teenagers would be less likely to steal it from their parents or get it from someone who's twenty one or older or anything like that because they're just gonna have less access to it. So my second request is that we use the funds collected from those potential taxes to put vape detectors in all public high school bathrooms. And this is important to me because I don't want more teenagers joining in this bad habit and I want our school bathrooms to be a better, safer place. And I just believe that our community should be focusing on our youth because we are what the community is going to be in the future. And we shouldn't have our teenagers already starting out being addicted to nicotine and vaping and all that kind of stuff. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes, go ahead.
I just have a comment for the young lady that just spoke. Very good presentation. But have you gone to your, your local school board?
Yeah, our, so our principal, he has like, we've done a lot of things for this, basically. We've taken all the mirrors out of all public school bathrooms. Because they thought that if we don't have mirrors anymore, they'd be less likely to go in there and that's not work. We have tried locking the bathrooms during class and period times. We've tried locking it before school and after school. So you can only go if your teacher allows you to go. We've tried like a lot of things and they're still doing it. So.
The point is that this is primarily an argument for your school board versus the county planning commission. But your presentation was excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to add a comment? Please. Even though we're not reviewing this chapter on page eleven dash twenty one. I want to see that the youth health survey, which is back in twenty eighteen, pointed out that. Amongst sixth graders in Thurston County, only one percent smoked cigarettes and only two percent use vapes. But by eighth grade, that ratio was three percent and eleven percent. And by tenth grade, that's six percent and twenty one percent use e-vapes.
One in five.
And that's, those numbers are from seven years ago?
Two thousand eighteen Healthy Youth Survey Department of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. So it's probably gotten worse.
Yeah. It sounds like that set of. Looked at, but next to media health.
I don't think we're allowed to add action. Can we add action?
Can we draw a connection to a climate policy? Cause that would open the door.
Oh, is the manufacturing, does it produce a lot of waste?
It does produce a lot of waste.
It does produce a lot of waste.
Yeah, yeah, hazardous waste at that. So there is a way to try to tie that in. Something to think about, yeah. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify at the public hearing today? I don't see anyone. So we will turn to our online audience. And see if anyone wishes to testify. If anyone online wishes to testify, please indicate so by raising their hand. I see a three, three, no, okay. Now, first on this is Darren, Cincinnati. Darren, you will be promoted to a panelist here momentarily. And if you unmute yourself, you'll be able to address the planning commission.
Are still muted, Darren. I do believe Darren has his hand up. I think so too early.
Sorry about that. It took me a minute to figure out how to unmute myself.
Terrific. We can hear you now. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Yeah, and thanks for allowing me some time to speak. I am not a Thurston County resident, but I am with the Conco Companies who owns. A handful of properties in the Grand Mound urban growth area. And we have some planned development there, mostly commercial warehouse type projects. And I wanted to. Provide my support for the option to increase the density of residential. Housing within residential zoned properties. But to also express opposition to the option to require residential. Components to developments within the commercial arterial zoned properties. So we, we would oppose residential components in those commercial arterial. Zoned properties for pretty obvious reasons, which you know, would include, you know, safety. And. Incompatibility really. You know, we, we would have, you know, commercial activity. Too close to people residing on those, those properties. So that was. That's pretty much my, my point and reason for participating.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, I believe we have Christie White would like to testify. Just one, Christie, you will be made a panelist.
You have to do it.
You have to do it.
I know, it's impossible for you.
See, never your.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Um, here, let me get onto, there we go. I don't know if you can see me or not. Thank you, uh, all of you this morning for offering this opportunity for a weekend session. I do not take that for granted. I live in the Delphi Valley, um, and I really appreciate what this comprehensive plan, what it took to put it together, as one of the earlier speakers said. I particularly like Appendix B. That made it very easy for, uh, a layperson like myself to figure out what all is in the plan and what to comment, uh, on. I want to start with, um, one of the things about standard telephone. Um, there are comments in the plan regarding Century Link and how it provides service to Thurston County. I can tell you from personal experience, our entire neighborhood, uh, I would encourage you all to, whatever pressure you can put on Century Link, they are not delivering, uh, service here to rural Thurston County. Um, the phone lines are dead most of the time. Our internet, uh, level is, is abysmal. And even despite FCC comments, letters, et cetera, there is, uh, nil, uh, uh, attempt to, to repair that. And I say that because as you know, my work previously with the Wireless Code, I would encourage you also in this plan to mitigate the amount of, uh, electromagnetic smog and that, that you balance the opportunity with phone service, uh, against, uh, increasing cellular service that just creates more magnetic fields than we probably need. So those are my comments in, in chapter seven. Um, pardon me as I'm looking at, uh, chapters here. Um, I also would like to encourage you, I know on page, uh, eight, excuse me, B dash two, um, there is reference to stakeholder involvement. And I also would encourage that in the plan, you continue to create more than involvement, but really take, uh, the information that's presented in these stakeholders and incorporate them into, into the planning that's done. Um, I was very encouraged, uh, in, in B dash three, uh, the supporting of natural resource, um, uh, areas, uh, as you know, I am a proponent of maintaining our rural areas and was, was thrilled to see how much is in support of that. Um, I also regarding, um, industrial, uh, development and water and wells. I, I see a real emphasis on well, um, management and, um, restriction and, and that for residents. I would, I would encourage that we look at, well, what is the water usage of our commercial usages? We've got casinos and warehouses and mining operations and multi-story complexes that we really compare, wh- where is the water use really a problem in, in our county? Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention was that in terms of, um, rural lands, um, I found a contradiction in that we want to mitigate how much, um, um, deal, um, that we're losing rural lands or we want to keep rural lands, but I saw a contradiction in that in B dash eighteen, we want to decrease the rural zoning densities. So I found a contradiction there, um, and so I wanted to point that out, um, a- as we try and protect our rural lands. I have a lot more comments that I apologize, it's a little disjointed, that I'll put in writing to you, but again, my appreciation and thanks for all of the work. It's an aggressive agenda that you have, how you could do all this in twenty years. Um, it, it, it is a, a long list. So thank you again for all the hard work that you do and I will send further written comments. So thank you again for the, the opportunity this morning.
Thank you very much for the spike. Do you have any more hands raised? Hey, if anyone that is attending online wishes to, oh, you've got a hand. Hey, that was easy. Uh, Justin Stang. You will be promoted to a panelist here and if you unmute yourself can, uh, provide a comment.
Good morning. Thank you for the, uh, opportunity. You guys can hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great, excellent. Um, my name is Justin Stang. I'm an Olympia resident and, uh, I'm a policy analyst for the Pacific Coast Shellfish Growers Association. Um, we represent over a hundred family and tribal shellfish operations in Alaska, Washington, Oregon, California, and Hawaii. Uh, many of those organizations, uh, sustainably farm shellfish, oysters, clams, gooey duck and mussels, uh, right here in Thurston County. And I just wanted to make a quick comment today to particularly draw your attention to the written comments submitted by Jesse Denike on behalf of the Taylor Shellfish Organization. Uh, we wholeheartedly support all of the, uh, written comments that Jesse has submitted and agree that, um, some of the environmental impacts of shellfish farming, particularly gooey duck, were classified inaccurately and we'd like to work together with you all to get, uh, to get some of that stuff ironed out a little bit clearer. Um, so, uh, I thank you for this opportunity and I'm really, um, uh, grateful for the work that you all have done and, uh, just wanted to draw, draw attention that our organization supports that, that letter that was written and submitted via written comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. We have other comments online. Okay, seeing none of this time, I think what we are going to do is we will, uh, go into recess. Does that think the right word? Okay, um, which will allow us to, to pause the audio recording. Um, and yet we will, uh, a, a quorum of the planning commission will remain here until two P M. In case anyone shows up in person or online and wishes to provide testimony, um, they will be able to do so and we will restart the audio recording and take that testimony, um, at that time. In the meantime, uh, anyone who does have any more like, uh, convers- this will become a lot more conversational at that point. So if anyone wants more casual engagement, like, please, please feel free to come up and approach us. Uh, that's what happened on Wednesday is we were able to hang out and, and chat with folks, um, while deserving the opportunity for people to comment in the public hearing if they, they arrived either fashion. So, um, yeah, we will, uh, start a recess, I think, um, now.
Excuse me. That allows to.
Sue Danvert is trying to put her hand up.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, before we do that, let's see if Sue wants to comment and, uh, we'll take her testimony. Hey.
Assistant. Now you're muted, Sue.
Sue, if you unmute yourself, if you wish to comment, please unmute yourself and we'll see if it works.
Now you're unmuted. You, we can hear you, Sue.
Oh, good. Thank you so much. I don't, I don't understand what happened. Um, my name is Sue Danvert. And my major comment is, please provide detailed and precise language in the comp plan and the county code. I am Sue Danvert. I live next to Capital Forest off of Delphi Road. I find it fun to reveal that I live on the divide between the McLean watershed and the Black River watershed. Uh, the ditch across the street goes to the Black River and the ditch on my side goes to McLean. So, I have devoted a significant amount over the last twenty five years to maintaining clean water in the lakes, rivers and streams and protecting high quality wildlife habitat Thurston Counties. These attempts sometimes have met some moderate success, but sometimes have ended up, in my opinion, with some undesirable compromises. Permit decisions by the hearing examiner often result in later administrative changes to the permit or future applications with similar app, um, applications, um, to, to, to be applied to the same parcel. It seems endless. Because of health issues, I have not participated in the long and complicated development of the comprehensive plan and county code two thousand forty five update. Even today, I speak in generalities because I haven't had the energy to read the final draft. Therefore, I support Black Hills Audubon Society's recommendations. It soon will be, or it is South Sound Alliance, Bird Alliance. Um, however, from my experience, from participating in numerous big hearings over twenty five years, I do have one valuable matter on which to comment. And I say hi to Scott because I have been working with him since two thousand one, I believe. Basically, hearing examiners are not judges. From my experience and very simple terms, citizens, including myself at times, think that the hearing examiner can interpret the vision of the comprehensive plan and the accompanying county code. Instead, from my observation, the hearing examiner's role is only to make sure that a permit decision abides by the guidelines of the county vision and code. Therefore, the language of the comprehensive plan and its corresponding code is very, very critical. The hearing examiner cannot adopt environmental decisions from vague vision and code. Hearing examiner needs precise directions. I gather the initial draft of the comp plan created by the planning commission in concert with many dedicated citizens created some of the needed detail in the code and in the plan. I ask you to return to some of those original comments or to that original, original draft where possible and add, then add any new important ideas developed from the later versions. Commissioners, I do thank you so much for your hard work on the comprehensive plan and code. It's time consuming and energy consuming. I esp- especially appreciate your support for wildlife corridors. Thurston County is unique. It is beautiful with its lakes and rivers and streams, its prairies, its rural lands, its farmland. I went to, um, King County or, and lived in, on top of a hill for twenty three days in a hospital in that concrete world. And I spoke to a lot of people in my visit up there and they appreciate Thurston County. And say, yeah, we love it. We go down there. I have a brother down there and he loves it or a sister or whatever, family, friends. Please keep it unique. Um, please protect its rural lands. Um, keep its waters clean. Um, so that's all. I wish I had more time or energy to have looked at the chapters on water and on mineral lands um, on natural resources. Um, I will provide this comment in written form by tomorrow's deadline. And thank you ever so much for your hard work. It's, it's, it's difficult. Good night, bye.
Thank you so much. Get our list, see if else is inspired to provide testimony. Okay. I don't see any more hands on the list, so now we will, uh, go into recess. The option to continue the public hearing up until two P M. If anybody shows up choosing to comment. And with that, I have, uh, one commissioner who's asked to be excused because of, uh, a medical situation and another who has, uh, asked to be excused, um, because of a, a work commitment, which means the other five of us will have to stay till two to maintain the quorum. We're nine currently.
Oh, you're right. So five counts.
Yeah, so five will, will be enough. So we, if anybody else wanted to leave, you should have asked people for those two. Sure, real quickly during recess, we. Uh, or not, we will, we will come out of our recess, uh, and back into the public hearing so that we can take testimony. And when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
Alex Passani. I'm a student in North Hurson High School. I live just off, uh, Vernon Road in that outskirts of Olympia. I'm here for the strong support of transit accessible rural housing policy two point A point C six. Encourage rural, rural housing affordable to low and moderate income residents located near public transit routes to provide alternate transportation opportunities is a game changer for unincorporated Thurston County. It shifts rural planning from an isolated model to one that incorporates housing and mobility, ensuring that new homes aren't stranded on car only roads. Rural areas has historically been transit deserts. By incentivizing development near existing line and bus routes, the county can reduce lifecycle transportation costs, often the single largest expense for low income household. This policy places transit quality on par with land use equity. Environmentally, rural transit adjacent housing cuts greenhouse gas. Newer car dependent commutes mean less fuel burned and shorter routes allow transit agencies to run more frequent, reliable service, creating a virtuous circle of ridership and funding that benefits both rural and urban riders. With social equity lens, locating affordable homes near transit quarters expands opportunity. A single parent relying on a bus network can reach childcare, healthcare and grocery stores without on risk travel times. That access fosters independence and reliance among residents who cannot drive. Policy two point eight point six also helps preserve farmland and forests. Rather than slicing new lots along remote county roads, clustering houses by transit quarters concentrates growth where infrastructure already exists, bringing up open space and protecting our rural character. Economically, transit accessible rural housing strengthens local small businesses and employment hubs. Workers can, who can reliably reach job centers by bus or van pool are less likely to experience absenteeism and employers in rural locals bring, gain a deeper labor pool. Health benefits accrue as well. Transit oriented designs often include sidewalks, safe crossings and bike lanes, features that encourage daily physical activity. When housing, when housing is in position near stop, walking to the bus becomes the first step in a routine that reduces sedative lifestyle. This policy dovetails with the plan's broad, broader compact growth objectives, full five. Reinforcing that rural housing need not equate to unchecked sprawl. By clearly articulating two point eight point six, the county signals to developers, transit agencies and funders that will re- residents deserve the same mobility investments as urban dwells. Implementation will, will, uh, require close coordination with intercity transit, Jefferson Transit and community shuttle providers, aligning stop locations, scheduling and fair agreements with housing set approvals. I encourage the county to formalize a joint working group to operationize these partnerships. Finally, success hinges on monitoring ridership, travel time savings and resident side. Finally, success hinges on monitoring ridership, travel time savings, and resident satisfaction. Let's build performance metrics into two point eight point six rollout. Track the number of homes delivered near roads, percentage of new residents using transit, and reductions in vehicle miles. This data will guide future refinements and funding appeals. In summary, policy two point eight point six is a forward looking bridge between housing justice and climate action. By embedding transit access into rural housing development, Thurston County can deliver on the promise of inclusive, sustainable, and connected communities, no matter where people choose to live. I urge the commission to adopt and resource two point eight point six fully in the final comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well done.
There's pizza out there too, if you buy some.
And there's also a vacancy on the planning commission. Are coming out of recess. You wanna five, okay. Well, uh anything for the good of the order?
No.
Oh.
Thanks for running a
Oh, I'm gonna officially close the public hearing at one o'clock. And uh with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Everyone's gonna go down to Art Squawk for the last two hours and